मानमुन वट्टी प्रवाह में मुनस्तुतिस्तो नाम अलग है सैम विलेन्स गार्नी ने नोदे काल समय मध्यहानमु इरोज़ उदेमु ना प्रवाह मेरा विशेकिंच वाड़कुन्नारो चेवरी कुड़िकलो गोड़ा मी पुनुध्दान बलमुन निरासन उन्हें प्रसादिंची मी परलोकपु तलम्पुल मीरमा कनग्रहिस्तो रम्मन वेड़कुन्ना दईलिगिन मातंडी रुणदिनाल परचेरी करके प्रार्थिंशन वारंदर बट्टी कनवड़ी कनवड़न विभागालो प्रयास पड़तन प्रिले नवारंदर बट्टी पृथ्वी मारा में मुनस्तुतिस्तो पाल पंपुल बंदुतुन वान्न वट्टी वड़ास्तो तोतराल चेलिस्तन्ना लाइव प्रोग्राम कन्नक जैसे तमुन जासवान बट्टी पौड़ा प्रवाह में मुनस्तुतिस्तो नाम इलायची द्वारा नातंडी प्रसिद्धमु बावश्यत्तलो नो विक्षिंचे प्रिले नुगोड़ा मेरे कनिकरिंची मी निवास स्थलमुगा कट्टबड़ी मी नित्य निवास ग्रोहमुनको सिद्ध पॉट केलिगुण डुकु कावलसन मी दयनुमायड़ल पालिस्तो रम्मन वेड़कुन्ना मगमनालन मीरे चरपट्टी आवरणमंत्ता मी प्रशिष्टमयन रक्तन्तो कंचकाव दला बदरतनु अनुग्रहिंची मी आले उल्लौड़ी पेटना ये वक्रो काली हृदयालतो तिरिगे वेलक का वारी वारी भागमुल वार पाल पंपुल बंदुनट्लु देवामी प्रशिष्टमयन एडुनमी वाकुचेता आत्मसमंदमयन बौती समंदमयन एट्वेंटी समुकुरपुलो निकरागल गोनोट्लु मी कार्यमुन मेरे जरिंचिमनी इनका यवरे ते हृदयालन कटिन पर्चुकुन्ना मी निवास स्थलमुनकु योग्यमुगा काका निज्युमयन निष्प्रयोजनमयन क्रियलतो नस्तपोतु उन्नारो वार्णुगोड़ा मीर दर्शिंची चेवरी कुड़िकलो समुकुरस्तो रम्मनी मी दईलिगिन स्थाल कप्पगिंच कुन्ना विश्वासम तेसु कृष्ण वर पेरेटा शरीर बलहिनत तल्लो यवरुनी आले उल्लौड़ी प्रवेशिस्तो नारो मी वाकु वेल्लड़ी अबड़े तोड़ने वारी के वेलुगुनु स्वस्थतनु समाधानमुनु नेम्मदनी शुभ प्रधमयन निरीक्षणु कलुगुण नट्लु मी कार्यमुन जरिंचिमनी मी दईलिगिन स्थाल कप्पगिंच कुन्ना ईसु कृष्ण वारी प्रशिष्टमयन नामुपेटा हृदय पूर्कंगा स्तुदलपिंची प्रार्थिंची वेड़कुन्ना मातंडी आमेन जारजर ना सैमेल ना बागरा ना लोगर पाल ना
इम्मुग सुदेन इम्मुगनी सुदेन नालु वंदला नालपी नालु पाठ्य नालु वंदला नालपी नालु पाठ्य अंतकेंटे पातपाल पुस्काल मुड़वंदल यनपी नालु इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदन इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु मुनो पाठी मंदिर महिमा नुमिंसु कड़पाटी मंदिर महिमा मुनो पाटी मंदिर महिमा नुमिंसु कड़पाटी मंदिर महिमा ईस्ताल मंदु नासमाधानम ईस्ताल मंदु नासमाधानम यंतय नानी चेदनंती वी प्रभु यंतय नानी चेदनंती वी प्रभु इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु अन्याजनुलनु कदलिंपगाने अन्नी वस्तुवुलो तेपडुनु अन्याजनुलनु कदलिंपगाने अन्नी वस्तुवुलो तेपडुनु विंडी पंगारमु अन्नीयु नावे विंडी पंगारमु अन्नीयु नावे दंडी गणि चेदनंती वी प्रभु दंडी गणि चेदनंती वी प्रभु इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु इम्मुगतुम्मी दवमा समोन इम्मुगतुम्मी दवमा समोन नी मंदिर आस्ते भारमोनु नी मंदिर आस्ते भारमोनु नी वाग्न पिंची वे इंची तीवी नी वाग्न पिंची वे इंची तीवी इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु नी आग्नलानु सिरसावहिंची दिव्यामु गाना ब्राह्मु नी आग्नलानु सिरसावहिंची दिव्यामु गाना ब्राह्मु हे प्रोनु लोगो डारंबु वेसी हे प्रोनु लोगो डारंबु वेसी कट्टे नु भली पीटमु नाचोटा कट्टे नु भली पीटमु नाचोटा इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु निंदो मनसुत काले भुनिन्नु दंडी गणनु सारी चागम निंदो मनसुत काले भुनिन्नु दंडी गणनु सारी चागम हे प्रोनु नु तन स्वच्छमु गानु हे प्रोनु नु तन स्वच्छमु गानु संब्रामु गानु संगीन दाता संब्रामु गानु संगीन दाता इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु दाविदु राजु निसन्नी दिलु दिनाततो मनविचय दाविदु राजु निसन्नी दिलु दिनाततो मनविचय हे प्रोनु पोम्मनी स्यलविंची तीवी हे प्रोनु पोम्मनी स्यलविंची तीवी प्राभो कलुगो निको निच्या महिमा प्राभो कलुगो निको निच्या महिमा इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु यल्लालनल्ला विषाल परची कल्लाग प्रेमानु सुपी यल्लालनल्ला विषाल परची कल्लाग प्रेमानु सुपी यल्लासत्तीनी सुपी ना प्राभु यल्लासत्तीनी सुपी ना प्राभु हल्लेलो यानि के ईसु प्रभु हल्लेलो यानि के ईसु प्रभु इम्मुगनी सुदेन अंबु नुड़ी मिम्मु नाशिर्वादिंच्छदनु ओम मनी नवो मा प्रभु नालु याफै यादु नालु याफै यन्मिदी मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहम मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु यंतसुंदरमो प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु यंतसुंदरमो प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु नलु देखुला नुड़ी कुचन्नोगा नलु देखुला नुड़ी कुचन्नोगा एक शरीरमु रात्त भंदमुच्छे एक शरीरमु रात्त भंदमुच्छे वेलदी पाशलनु नुड़ी नानु वेलदी पाशलनु नुड़ी नानु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु वकनु तनव्या तिगमुच्छे वकनु तनव्या तिगमुच्छे हरमाग्रोहमु नकुचंदी तीमी हरमाग्रोहमु नकुचंदी तीमी आइक्यततो सिरमु गानमच्छम्हाडी आइक्यततो सिरमु गानमच्छम्हाडी देवु निगुड़ा रमु गानाइ तीवी देवु निगुड़ा रमु गानाइ तीवी मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु नल्लनी दल्लनी वारनी लेदु नल्लनी दल्लनी वारनी लेदु नल्लु दरिकुलनी यु लेदु नल्लु दरिकुलनी यु लेदु आमरुलनी ग्नानुलनी यु लेदु आमरुलनी ग्नानुलनी यु लेदु ईसु प्रभु वे सार्वमु गा ईसु प्रभु वे सार्वमु गा मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु ना कल्लमु लेदु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु ना कल्लमु लेदु ईर्ष्यक पठ वेदमु लेदु ईर्ष्यक पठ वेदमु लेदु चांकी आनंदमु निजा प्रेमायुंदु चांकी आनंदमु निजा प्रेमायुंदु एकपुत्त नडुपुनु मनम प्रभुवे एकपुत्त नडुपुनु मनम प्रभुवे मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु दरयं दोनदी प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु इदरयं दोनदी तनदासुलकदि कारमिचे तनदासुलकदि कारमिचे नतिवानि किवानि पनिनी अमिंचे नतिवानि किवानि पनिनी अमिंचे कावल्ली योंडो मुमेलकुवतो कावल्ली योंडो मुमेलकुवतो मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु धुड़ावी स्वासमु मधिनंतोच्छि धुड़ावी स्वासमु मधिनंतोच्छि विजयुलय आकलो सागेदमु विजयुलय आकलो सागेदमु आदासुलमई ईजदमंदुन आदासुलमई ईजदमंदुन ओतिगा शाक्रु नोडिंपमु ओतिगा शाक्रु नोडिंपमु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मियोनी दिनमु सामी पिंचचु नानी मियोनी दिनमु सामी पिंचचु नानी जेप्पे नु मेलकोनी योंडो मनी जेप्पे नु मेलकोनी योंडो मनी विश्वासयोग्य लमु काजिविंचि विश्वासयोग्य लमु काजिविंचि गोरी मितो वेचि योंडे दमु गोरी मितो वेचि योंडे दमु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचु नुदानी अंधु बले बले माटा पाट बढ़कु बले बले माटा पंगारो माटा भई भोलो माटा ईसु माटा फले बले माटा पंगारो माटा भई भोलो माटा ईसु माटा मरवानी माटा ईसु माटा मरवानी माटा ईसु माटा फले बले माटा पंगारो माटा भई भोलो माटा ईसु माटा फले बले माटा पंगारो माटा भई भोलो माटा ईसु माटा
देवु नु वर्त्तमान विल्चामु
वी थैंक गॉड फॉर डी प्रैक्टिस वी हैव सिंगिंग डी बाइबल कोरस इन एवरी मीटिंग
प्रति मीटिंगले कोड़ा बाइबलु कोरस पाड़टानिकी
इस प्रैक्टिस
प्रति मीटिंगले कोड़ा बाइबल कोरस नु पाड़टानिकी प्रैक्टिस चेसन बट्टी प्रभु कोणनालु
या लवाटन बट्टी
या लवाटन बट्टी
सो व्हेनएवर वी लिफ्ट अप आर बाइबल्स और सिंग डी बाइबल कोरस
एप्पड़े ते मन बाइबल पाइकेते बाइबल पाले पाड़ेमो
सम्बडी न्यूली कम्स इनटू आर मेट्स
यवरे ना क्रत्वार मन मधिको अच्छनपु
दे आर अट्रैक्टेड बाय दिस
वारु दीनवाल आकर्षिंस पड़ताल
दे विल गो ऑन तू आस्क व्हाट इस दिस
वाल अड़ुतार एंटी दियानी
ड्यूरिंग डी होली कन्वेक्शन्स इन हाइड्राबैड इन हेब्रोम
हेब्रोमलो होली कन्वेक्शन्स समयुलो
थाउजेंड्स ऑफ़ बिलीवर्स विल कम फॉर डी कन्वेक्शन
व्यालमंदी विश्वासुलु दान कोस्तारु कन्वेक्शन
डी ईयर 1985 वी हैव डी लास्ट कन्वेक्शन
पुत्तोमिदी वंदल यनपी यादुलो चेवरी कन्वेक्शन जरिंदी
एंड डू नो हो मेनी पीपल केम
एत्वंदो चेरमी तेलसा
अबाउट 25,000 अटेंडेड डी कन्वेक्शन
25 व्यालमंदी गाव वच्चार
दे वर ग्लोरियस डेज
अदी चालम महिमिकरण में दिनालु
एंड ऑल ऑफ़ डीम नोस्ट ऑफ़ डीम अबाउट क्लोस तू 20,000 विल बी सिटिंग इन डी हेरमन कंपान 20,000 ऑफ़ पीपल विल बी सिटिंग इन हेरमन कंपान
हेरमनु प्राङ्गणमुलो 25 व्यालमंदी कुचुनार
एंड ऑल ऑफ़ डीम दे विल बी लिफ्टिंग डीर बाइबल्स और सिंगिंग
अंदरु कोड़ा बाइबल लेते वारु आपल्लवनी पाड़ार
सो फ्रॉम डी बैक इफ यू सी दिस
एवनुकुनुड़ी ई दृश्य नु चूसते
विल सी ओनली बाइबल्स सीन
केवलो बाइबलु मात्रमे कन्पिंचिनी
सच अन ब्यूटीफुल साइड तू लुक आत
निजानिकी चोड़टानिकी अंतो अदी आकर्षिनी में नट्वेंट दृश्य
दिस इस व्हाट डी मैन ऑफ़ गॉड ब्रदर बख्सिंग स्टार्टेड डूइंग
अदी मरी देवजनुडायरु बख्सिंग वारु प्रारंभ बिंचिन नट्वेंट
इन डी ओरली डेज इन चेन्नई
प्रारंभ मरी चेन्नईलो प्रारंभ दिनालु
यूज़ तू इनकरेज डी पीपल तू कम तू डी मीटिंग्स विथ बाइबल
मरी मरी प्रजलनु बाइबल तो रम्मनी आयना प्रोत्साहित्तु उन्देवा
एंड यूज़ तू से इफ यू डू नॉट हैव योर बाइबल
निकु गनका बाइबल लेकपोते
फील अशेम्ड 174 टाइम्स
नोट 24 सारु मनमु सिगु पड़ाली अंचप्तार
व्हाय 174 टाइम्स
एंड कानी नोट 24 सारु
दे हैव डी पर्पस इन सेइंग डेट
आ चपड़ोलो उद्देश्य मुंदी
इन सॉर्म 119
तम्बयव कीर्तनलो
एक्सेप्टिंग तू वर्सेस
रेंडु वचिनाल तपिस्ते
ऑल डी 174 वर्सेस इन डेट सॉर्म दे स्पीक अबाउट डी बाइबल
मरी मिगिलिन एट्वेंट वचिनालनी कोड़ा नोट पोंदम दावे दिकेतलु बाइबल गुरुंचे उन्नदी
174 वर्सेस
नोट 24 वचिनाल
डेट्स व्हाय यूज़ तू से फील अशेम्ड इफ यू नॉट कम तू डी मीटिंग विथ बाइबल
अंदकने आयन अन्नाडु बाइबल तो रागुते नोट 24 सारु सिगु पड़ाली
दिस इनकरेज डी पीपल पुट डम तू शेम सो दे ऑल वर कमिंग तू डी मीटिंग्स विथ डी बाइबल
अदी प्रजल अंतो मरी प्रोत्साहिंची अंदरु बाइबल तो रावडानिकी मरी सहाय पड़ी
एंड बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ डेट ऑल डी बाइबल्स इन डी बाइबल सोसाइटी इन चेन्नई दे वर ओवर
दीनवाल ना मरी आयोक्का चेन्नई पट्टलो नट्वेंटी बाइबल सोसाइटी वार्ड बाइबल नाही पोइनी
दे ब्रॉड बाइबल्स फ्रॉम कर्नाटका
कर्नाटक नुच्ची तेवाल्स अच्छी
दे ब्रॉड इट फ्रॉम आंध्र प्रदेश
आंध्र नुच्ची तेवाल्स अच्छी
इवन फ्रॉम बॉम्बे
बॉम्बाई नुच्ची तेवाल्स अच्छी
दिल्ली अलसो
दिल्ली नुच्ची गोड़े तेपिंचार
एंड कैलकता अलसो
कैलकता नुच्ची गोड़े तेपिंचार
ऑल ऑफ़ डीम वर ओवर
अन्नी कुड़ा पोइनी
नो बाइबल्स इन इंडिया
बाइबल लेव भारत देशोलो
सो व्हाट दे डे
एंजेसर वार
दे इन्फॉर्म डी बाइबल सोसाइटी इन इंग्लैंड
इंग्लैंडलो उन्नट्वेंटी बाइबल सोसाइटी वारी की तेली चेसर
दे से व्हाट इस अप्पनिंग इन इंडिया
एंड जरिंदी इंडियालो
सो ऑल दिस ईयर्स डी बाइबल्स वर नॉट बीइंग सोल्ड लाइक दिस ऑल दिस ईयर्स डी बाइबल वर नॉट बीइंग सोल्ड लाइक दिस
ये मरी ए समत्रं कोड़ा इन्नी बाइबल्सु मिडियालो अम्मा बड़ले दु अन्नावा
इन्नी समत्रालुगा
इन्नी समत्रालुगा
व्हाट इस अप्पनिंग इन इंडिया
ए जरुतुंदी भारत देशोलो
दे से
वर अन्नारु
वन सरदारजी सिंग यस कम फ्रॉम पंजाब
पंजाब नुच्ची वक्का सरदारजी वच्चार
एंड इस इनकरेजिंग पीपल तू हैव डी ओन बाइबल
वायना मरी प्रजलनु तम्ब बाइबल तो रम्मनी प्रोत्साहिंचार
एंड इफ यू नॉट विथ योर बाइबल यस से व्हेन यू सिंग डी बाइबल कोरस फील अशेम्ड 174 टाइम्स
बाइबल लेकुंडा वस्ते मरी आयोक्का बाइबल कोरस पाड़कुपोते अदी सिगुगा भाविंसलान चेप्परायन सिगु पड़ाल
कालु कालु
ओकरालु बाइबल लेकुन्दा वस्ते, मरी आयोक्का बाइबल कोरस पाडुपोते, अदी सिगुगा भाइविंसलानि चेप्यारायना सिगुपडालानि चेप्यार
पाड्तुन पुडू नोटाड्याप्पे एडु सारु सिगुपडान्डी
पाड्तुन पुडू, पाडपाड्तुन पुडू नोटाड्याप्पे नालुगु सारु सिगुपडान्डी अन्चेप्यार
Then they did not believe all this
अपुडू वारी वनी नमलेदु
They all came all the way from England to India
वारु इंग्लैंडनुच्छ भारतदेशन कोच्च
They came to Chennai
चन्नाइ कोच्च
Those days, the meetings were held on the beach in Marina
मेरीना बीचलो आदिनालो आयोक्का सबल निर्वेहिंच पट्टाय
They could not believe that
वार नमलेक पोयार
Not only they were singing the Bible chorus
आ बायोक्का बाइबल कोरस पाड्तुन पुडू
पाड्टमात्रमे कालु
पाड्टमात्रमे कालु
Hundreds of people, they were accepting the Lord as their Savior
मरी वंदलमान्दी प्रजलु प्रभुनी रक्षुकुन्गा अंगिकरिंचारु
So, this is how the Lord's servant was encouraging everybody to read the Bible.
मरी ई रीतिका प्रतिवक्कनी आ दायवसायकुडू हथरिस्तु वच्चारु
I don't know how many of us read our Bible this morning.
मरी एत्वंदी ई रोजु बाइबल चदिवेरो मरी मरी
I'm not going to ask you to put your hand
मीरु ई चेत्रेत चुपिंच मन अडगनो
Whenever you come for the meetings
मीरु मरी ईयोक्का मीटिंग वच्चन पुडल्ला
If you are singing the Bible chorus
मनम बाइबल योक्का पाले पाड्तुन पुडू
Sing it only if you have read the Bible.
मीर बाइबल चदिवे नपुडू मात्रमे अदी पाड्न
Because if you don't raise your Bible, others will come to know you have not read the Bible.
मनम बाइबल लेते पाड्तुन पुड्डु, मरी मनम बाइबल चदिवे मोलेदु तेलीदु
कादु, बाइबल लेत्कपोते, इतरलु बाइबल सदोलेदन अनुकुंटारु
अड़
बाइबल लेते पाड्गपोते
बाइबल लेते पाड्गपोते, बाइबल सदोलेदनी अनुकुंटारु
So, let us not give that impression
अलांटी अविप्रायन कलिगेन्स कोडु
But you don't sing
अलांडपु पाड्यो
Let others sing, but you don't sing
अद्वितरल पाड्रेवंडी मीर पाड्यो
Why I'm saying all this is
एन्दिकनी निविशाल चेप्तान
To show how important, how necessary the Bible is.
बाइबल यो एन्ता प्रशेष्तमायनु दु, एन्ता अवसरमायनु दु नेचेप्तावन
And I have been going to Nepal for the past so many years for ministry regularly
कोण्नी समत्रालुगा नेनु क्रमंत तपुकुंडा, मरी नेपालु स्या परिचरिक वेल्टुन
There is so much of work of the Lord going on there.
मरी देवुड़ अक्र चालक अजन्तो कार्यान जरिगिस्तु वच्च
They have the convocation where about five thousand people come
आइद व्यालमान्दी आ कन्वेक्शन कटेन्डाय
Special meetings, about one or two thousand also will come
प्रत्येकक कुडिकलुकु ओका वैयी रेंडु व्यालमान्द वच्चारु
You know how they sing the Bible chorus?
वारु एवेदिंगा बाइबल कोरस पाट्टर तेल्सा
They won't raise like this
वार इलागु एतुतारु बाइबलनी
एतर इलाग एतरो They will raise with both their hands
रेंडु चेतुल तो वार इलाचुपिस्तार
Not only that
अदी मात्रमे कालु
Whenever they sing the Bible chorus
एप्पडे आइते वार बाइबल कोरस पाड्टारो
Brothers and sisters, they will go upon their knees
वारु अक्र उन्नट्वंडी मरी सहोदरी सहोदरलु मोकालमेदु नरी पाड्टार
And they sing the Bible chorus closing their eyes
वारु अक्का कल्लुमूस्कोनी बाइबल इलापट्टुकोनी पाटपाड्टार
I asked them, "Why do you do this?"
नेन अडिगेनु वारु नेन्दिकी इलाच्छन
"Why are you kneeling down?"
एन्दिकानी मोकरिंचार
I know, I understand that you are respecting the word of God
तेल्सु मीरु देवुन वाक्यानी गौरविस्तनारनी
मरी कण्लुमूस्कन एन्दिक पाड्टार
मरी कल्लुमूस्कन एन्दिक पाड्टनार
You know, what is, what is the answer I got?
नेनु कोण्नी नट्वंडी समाधारमेंत तेल्सा
When we sing the Bible chorus, we will also pray
मनम बाइबल कोरस नु पाडिरपुडू मनम प्रार्थन कोडा चियाली
वालु वालु चेस्त
वार चेस्त
So, this is the practice in the whole of Nepal
नेपाललो जरुतुन अट्वंडी मरी आचरण अदे
So, let us be encouraged by these things
कबटी ई विशाल द्वारा मनम कोडा प्रोत्सेहिस्त पड्दाम
I don't want you to, I'm not insisting you to kneel down and close your eyes
मीर अंदरु कोडा मोकालमेदु निकल्लुमूस्कमनी नेनु वतिर चैक्ल
But still you can pray
मनम प्रार्थन चेदाम
"Lord, speak to me this evening"
प्रभु अनातो माट्लाडान्डी
"Speak to me this morning"
ई विद नातो माट्लाडान्डी प्रभु अनी मन
The morning also, you speak to me when I come to the house of God
मनम देवु, मनम उदयं कोडा प्रभु अनातो माट्लाडमनी प्रभुसं
And the Lord will surely speak to us
तप्पन सरिगा प्रभुवार मनतो माट्लाड्तार
Now, shall we turn to our theme verse
मनयोक्का मोलावाक्यम वाइप मन चुद्दामो
Ephesians chapter 2
एफएसी पत्रिका रेंडो अज्जायमो
And verse 22
इरवै रेंडावु वच्चनम
Ephesians chapter 2
एफएसी पत्रिका रेंडो अज्जायमो
Verse 22
इरवै रेंडावु वच्चनम
All together shall we read
अंदरं कल्सी चदुकुंदाम
In whom we also are building together for an habitation of God through the Spirit, shall we pray
प्रार्थिंचुकुंदाम
Loving Heavenly Father
प्रीमाइन परलोक कप्तान
We thank and praise you for gathering us together this evening for the last time in these special meetings
प्रत्येकमा नट्वंडी चेवरी कुडिकलु मम्मलंदनी कोच्चनंदु कोणनालु
Thank you for bringing us to the last meeting
आयोक्का चेवरी सबनु माकिच्छिनंदु कोणनालु
Thank you, Lord, for helping us and speaking to us since yesterday
निन्नटनुच्छ मातो माट्लाडुतु, माकु सहाय पड्डुत वच्चनंदु कुनिक स्तोत्र
Thank you, thank you for revealing your heart's desire
नियोक्का रुदय वांचनु माकु चेप्पिनंदु कोणनालु
Thank you, Lord, you are desiring that we should become the habitation of God
प्रभा, मीयोक्का निवास स्थलमगा उन्नालनी मेनु वांचिस्तुन
In fact, the angels of God are better, they can become a better habitation of God than us
प्रभा, निजानिकी आयोक्का दोतलु, माकंटे गोपन निवास स्थलमगा उन्नगल
But you have set them aside and chosen us to become your habitation
आनी निवारी प्रकणुंची मम्मल्ने नुकुनाव
Lord, what a great privilege it is
प्रभा, एन्ता महिमिकारमायनट्वंडी विष
What an honor you have given to us
प्रभा, एन्ता गोपा आदिकित्रमा किच्चा
And thank you for showing unto us how we can become such a habitation
प्रभा, मीयोक्का निवास स्थलमगय एला उन्नालो माक तेली चैसर वन्नाल
Lord, continue to speak to us even this evening
आ ई री सायिंकालम कोडा मातो माट्लाडान्डी
Make our time fully profitable and edifying Make our time profitable and edifying
प्रभा, ई समयानी माकु मेलुकारमगानु आशिरोद कारंगाचे
None may go away empty from thy presence
यवरै कोडा वट्टी चेतुल तो काली, रुदय तो तिरिगलपुड
Boas did not allow Ruth to go empty from his house
प्रभा, ईयोक्का ग्रोहमनुच्छ यवरु कालीगा वेलकोर्दनी कोर्कुं
Boas never allowed Ruth to go empty from his house Lord, we thank you for all those who could come this evening for the meeting
आ ई सायिंकालम मीटिंग राव्डानी क्रमचुपिनंदु कोणनालु
Lord, let thy presence be felt by everyone
मा इक्रुन न प्रतिवक्करुन ई सन्नीदिन अनुभविंचाली
Hide both of us also behind the cross
प्रभा, माईदर्नी कोडा मी सिलुचाट्न मरुकु
Lord, grant us the grace to give thy word in all simplicity and clarity
प्रभा, मरी, मरी एन्तो स्पष्टमगा, मरी माट्लाटु सहाय चेय
Lord, help me also to make my Lord sharing of the word very simple, so that it can also be translated easily
प्रभा, नेनु कोडा मरी, मरी सहजंगा चपड्टानिकी सिलुगा ट्रांसलेट चेडानिकी सहाय चेय
Lord bless our time
मा समयान आशिरोदिंसन तन
We ask this prayer with thanksgiving, in the name of our Lord and our Savior, Lord Jesus Christ
पुरत्नता कोर्पोरवक्मगा मायोक्का विन्नपमलु ईसुकृष्टनामलो समर्पिंची वेडकुंचुराप तन
Amen
Amen
We have been seeing certain principles by which we can become the habitation of God
देवुनी निवास स्थलमगा उन्डुते एलागो कोण्नी नीमालु मनम चूस्य
What is the first thing we saw?
मनम चूस्न मधित्व विष वेंटी
Tell loudly
कत्तगाच चेप्पन
Chief cornerstone मूलराय
मूलराय
The Lord Jesus Christ is the chief cornerstone for this habitation
ईयोक्का निवास स्थलानिकी प्रभु ए मूलराय युन्नार
We saw five things why the Lord Jesus is the chief cornerstone
प्रभुवारु एन्दिकु मूलराय युन्नाडो मनम आइद विशाल चूस्य
Then secondly, we saw the foundation for this habitation
रेंडाविदिगा ईयोक्का निवास स्थलानिकी अवसरमायन पुनादिनी मनम चूस
And we saw it is a six-fold foundation
अदी आरंतला आयोक्का, आयोक्का, आयोक्का
पुनादी
पुनादिनी मनम चूस्य
We saw that yesterday and even this morning also
मनम निन्न चूस्यामु ईवधय कोडा दान चूस्य
Now, we come to the third principle
इप्पडु मनम मुड़वा अम्सानिको
For any building, after they lay the foundation
मरी पुनादी वेच्न तरुवात
They raise the pillars for that building
दानी, दानी मेदा अवसर, आयोक्का निवासानिक अवसरमायन अट्वंडी पिल्लर्स वेस्तार
Here also, in this hall, so many pillars are we are seeing
इक्रड़ कोडा मनम चालक पिल्लर्स नुचोस्तार
Why so many pillars?
एन्दिकानी चाला मरी दिमल उन्नाई
Pillars only will give the strength for the body, for the building
मरी आयोक्का, आयोक्का बिल्डिंगकी आ पिल्लर्सु मरी सेटिनिस्ताय लेकुन बलानिस्ताय
Without these pillars, the first floor, it cannot take the weight
आ ई पिल्लर्स लेकुन्दा मधित्व अंतस्तु बरुरु बोइलेय
So, if you see in this hall also, so many pillars are there, about, say sixteen pillars are here
दसुमारुगा पदहारु आ इक्रा मरी पिल्लर्स कन्पिस्तार
In the same way, in the habitation of God also, there are spiritual pillars
मरी देवुनी आयोक्का निवासुलु कोडा आत्मसम्मंदमायन अट्वंडी पिल्लर्स उन्नाई
And among these pillars, four corner pillars are very important
वीटलो मरी नालुग मोललु उन्नट्वंडी नालुगु पिल्लर्सु चाला प्रारमुक्क
Because these four corner pillars only, they bear the major weight of the building
ई नालुग मात्रमे प्रधानमाय, प्रधानंगा ई बिल्डिंगयोक्का यदिक भारानिमोस्तुन
So, pillars are important
आयोक्का दिमलु इम्पार्टेन, प्रामुक्क
And in addition to that, the corner pillars, four corner pillars are very, very important
वीटलो कोडा नालुग वाइपुलु नट्वंडी पिल्लर्सु चाला प्रामुक्क
We cannot have any building without these four corner pillars
आ ईविलेकुन्दा अलांटी बिल्डिंग उन्नदो नालुग पिल्लर्स लेकुन
So, in the same way, in the habitation of God
अदेविदमगा देवुनी निवासुलु
There are some pillars
कोण्नी आयोक्का पिल्लर्स उन्नाई
स्तंभलु कदर
उन्न स्तंभ
Among the pillars, four corner important pillars are also there
उन्नट्वंडी ई स्तंभललो नालुग वाइपुलु नट्वंडी स्तंभलु चाला प्रामुक्क
We read about all of them in Acts chapter 2
अपोस्टल कार्यालु रेंडो अज्जायमलो ई विशाल मन चूस्तार
We all know what, which verse it is
मनंदरिकी कोडा अवच्चन वेंटो कोडा तेल्सु
We find these four important pillars in verse 42
नलफ़े रेंडो वच्चनुलो ई नालुग पिल्लर्सु लेकुन्दी स्तंभलुनु मन चूस्तार
Many times, we look at only these four pillars and forget about the other pillars
आ ई नालुग पिल्ल, ई नालुग स्तंभली चदिवी, मिगिल्नाट्वंडी स्तंभलु गुरुची मच्चिपो
But if you read from, from verse 44 onwards in the same chapter
आयोक्का अज्जायमलोने नलफ़े नालुग वच्चनुच्छ चदिते
There are four more pillars mentioned there
अक्रा मरी नालुग पिल्लर्स, नालुग स्तंभलु गुरुन्चे चप्पु
So, the four pillars in verse 42
नलफ़े रेंडो वच्चनुलो नालुग स्तंभलु
Was four pillars from verse 44
नालुग, नालुग, नालुग वच्चनुलो नालुग स्तंभलु
How many pillars now?
एन्न उन्नाई अक्रा स्तंभलु
Eight pillars
एनीमिदी स्तंभलु उन्नाई
All these eight pillars must be found in the habitation of God
ईयोक्का देवुनी निवासुलु, ई एनीमिदी स्तंभलु कोडा उन्नाली
All these eight pillars must be found in the habitation of God here in Baraka
ई बराका, आ देवुनी निवास स्थलमलो कोडा, ई एनीमिदी स्तंभलु उन्नाली
So, let us see what those pillars are
First of all, we see the pillars in verses forty-four to forty-seven. The first pillar was forty-four. And all that believed were together. They were all together. That is important. We may gather together. But they cannot do that, that is very important. So that is what the believers were doing at that time. What does this speak about? In other words, we can call this as a pillar of unity. This is what the Lord desires in our mates. But what is Satan doing? He knows if this pillar is not there. Oh, the building, the habitation will become weak. There will be weakness in that structure. So he wants to bring that spiritual weakness in the work of God, in the house of God, in the habitation of God. Don't think we are having problem with unity. Satan is bringing that problem. He is looking at Baraka. Or he is looking at my assembly in Hyderabad, Shekem. What I should do? Break this unity that is there. So that the habitation of God becomes weak. And that is why when we become weak. We are not able to pray together. We are not able to worship together. We are not able to go and witness to others together. See how much of damage enemy is wanting to bring in our mates. And that is why we must be very careful dearly beloved. We must pray much for the spiritual unity in our mates. So this is the first pillar. Pillar of unity. We cannot say much because we don't have time. Then the second pillar. We find it in the same verse. In the second part we read, and they had all things common. Yeah, yeah. They were having equality in their mates. Nobody was high or low. Everybody was in the same, in the same grade. So this is the second pillar. Pillar of equality. There was no high or low. No rich or poor. Educated or uneducated. As we sang this afternoon in one of the songs. There is no black or there is no white. That is what we sang. We are only singing, but we are not practicing it. May the Lord give us this equality in our mates. That was there in the past. It was there, this was there in the past. You will not make out who is who. So that was a condition in the past. Only when you try to find out, you will know who that brother is, where he is working and what is he doing. Otherwise, in the past in Hebrew. They will, everybody will say, Anna, Anna, Anna. Who is this Akka, who is that Akka, we don't know. If you ask them. That is how we were in the past. But what has happened now? He is so and so. He is working there. This is how we have lost our spiritual equality. Why, why is this happening? Again, this is Satan's work. Because he sees this inequality outside in the world and is bringing it inside the church. Satan is bringing it inside. Unless and until we pray for this oneness and equality, these things will continue to be there in our mates. Now we come to the third pillar. We find that in verse forty-five. Shall we all read this verse together? Acts two and verse forty-five. And sold their possessions and goods and parted them to all men as every man had need. See what are they doing? Oh, some of them, they were having possessions. Not all of them. If all of them had possessions. No need to sell them. Maybe only few had possessions. Others did not have any possessions. Maybe they were living in poverty. So what did the other believers do? Oh, my dear brother is not having enough money. Oh, he does not have a good house. He does not have good furniture. He is not able to have proper food. So what I will do? I will sell my house. Why? Because five such people are there, I know. There are five people in that condition. So I don't have the money also. So what I will do? I will sell my house. And give the money, distribute the money to them. I will buy something for them. So what is this pillar? It is a pillar of sharing with one another. Some years ago. The Lord took me for ministry to Australia. And there I know one young man, young boy whom I knew from his childhood. There was a young boy whom I knew from my childhood. And he got married. So he got a job there in Australia. It's a small job. And he has to take a house also to stay. You have to pay lot of advance there. So whatever money he had, he gave all the money for advance. And then they did not have anything in their house. They went and bought few bed sheets. They spread it on the ground and sleep. And they were going to a nearby church. It is not our fellowship. But when they went there. The very first week, all of them, they were very loving toward them. They said, who are you? Where did you come from? When did you come? When did you come? Where is your house? And they told they were living in that locality. And they said, we want to come and visit you. This husband and wife, they were scared. There is nothing in our house. What to do? So both of them prayed. Lord, you help us, help them not to get offended, not to think anything about us. Then the believers came. When they came inside. Where is your house? Where is your bedroom? Where is your dining hall? Where is your kitchen? They are all there. But when they went and saw. Except in few vessels. Vessels, vessel, bathroom. Nothing is there with them. Only two bed sheets are there on the ground. Then they said, have you ordered for your furniture? Have you ordered for your furniture? They said, no. We are going to order later on. They said, why? Because we gave you all the money for advance. And then do you know what happened? Within two hours. Everything was furnished in their house. They brought sofa set. They brought carts. They brought beds also. They brought a big cooking range. No, no, cooking range, that is a stove, gas stove. Many vessels they brought. Cups and sauces they brought. Because Australia becomes cold, they brought carpet also to lay on the road, on the floor. Carpet, carpet. Everything they brought. There was no lack at all. How did it, how soon did it happen? Within two hours. The whole house was changed. That church had the pillar of sharing. How much we have to learn from them? We are proud about our fellowship. It is true. But what about this Darshana? Pillar of sharing with others. The early church had this pillar. There is a saying which says, there is great joy in sharing. How many of us are having that Anandam? We have the joy of salvation. We have the joy of having Bible. We have the joy of having a church. We have joy of our jobs. But do you and I have the joy of sharing whatever we have with others? How is our attitude these days? We are closed hands. Don't open at all. If at all we open. Little and close is immediately. That is not sharing. We cannot become the habitation of God. Early church had the pillar of sharing. So first of all, pillar of unity. Secondly, the pillar of equality. Then thirdly. The pillar of sharing with one another. And we need to share not only things, the sufferings and sorrows of our fellow believers also. We see in verse forty-seven. What were they doing? They were praising God. They were worshippers. Worship is also a very strong pillar. There is great power and might in worship. What did Jehoshaphat do when he was confronted by the enemy? What did Jehoshaphat, Jehoshaphat do when the enemies came against him? He did not say to go and fight with them. He did not ask other nations to come and join him. What did Jehoshaphat do? He told the people to start praising and worshipping the Lord. And as they were praising and worshipping, the enemy was put to naught, they were defeated. So that is a power in our worship. And that is why those who are worshippers, they are also strong believers. Satan knows that. And that is why Satan does not allow you and I to worship the Lord. He is not allowing young people particularly to open their mouths these days. I have visited many assemblies. In some assemblies. Young people are strong. And whenever I ask them. Whenever I talk to them. I have found they are victorious young men. God servants are giving that testimony. Then I asked them, how is it? And some of, a few of the God servants gave me this answer. You know what God servant said? Two things. They are regular in coming to the house of God. Secondly, all of them are worshippers. So much so, we have to give one-fourth of the time also for young people only. Otherwise, they come and ask us. They come and tell the God servant. Uncle, my Simon, sorry, Paul, Edou. We all want to worship. And in another assembly. I saw children worshipping the Lord. I was surprised. And I gave a message where I touched seven points for worship. Children were noting down. And when the worship started. The God servant said. First, children worship the Lord and they go. So what I thought and expected was, what I thought and expected. They will regularly, they will repeat the worship like a parrot. Thank you for the good, good health you have given. Lord helping us in our studies. Protecting us throughout the week. No, that was not the worship. Every child mentioned seven points and worshipped. I am telling you honestly. As they were worshipping. I was crying. I said, Lord, my children have not been trained like this. They are not able to worship. It is true, my children were young. They were only about seven and five years. But here children, five years old, they are worshipping the Lord. Telling all the seven points and worshipping the Lord. After some years, again, I went to that assembly. And then I asked the God servant there. Are you still having children to worship on Sunday? He said, yes, it is still going on. I said, what about the children who worshipped when I came about eight or nine years ago? You know, you know what the Lord servant said? They are all strong in the Lord. Two of them are serving the Lord in their young age. This is the secret and the strength of worship. Oh, may the Lord teach us this precious lessons. So that we will encourage our children also to worship the Lord in the house of God. You know what will happen then? The habitation of God will become a strong habitation. Children are worshipping. Young people are worshipping. Brothers and sisters are worshipping. Elderly people are also worshipping. How can such a habitation become weak? It has to be a strong habitation. The mistake is not with the Lord. The mistake is not with the Lord. The mistake is not with the God servant or elders. The mistake is in me. The mistake is in you. May the Lord teach, teach us this precious lesson. Let there be this pillar of worship, much more, become more and more strong in Baraka. For that pillar to be seen in Baraka. If you have to see that pillar in Baraka. This pillar must be there in our homes also. Worship must begin at home. As parents, we must worship the Lord. As parents, we must worship the Lord. We must. Then our children will learn to worship the Lord. And must also encourage and teach them to worship the Lord. Make them to worship the Lord every day if possible. I had gone to Goa some years ago. And I was staying in one brother's house. I went there for ministry. That night, I reached there at eleven o'clock. By the time we finished our food, it was twelve o'clock. And after that. They had family prayer. Five children were there. Brother and sister, they were their parents. Then I was there the eighth percent. And then the brother said. Brother, we will have our family prayer. They read one chapter. They asked me to take some time and explain few verses. After we did that. Then the brother said. Brother, we start the day with worship, we end the day with worship. And then he said, we all worship brother. In the morning, all the seven of us will worship. The night also, we all the seven will worship. I was thinking, what is this? At that time, one o'clock. All of them worshipped. It was so encouraging for me to hear that worship. I became so strengthened in my spirit when I heard that worship. Then we went to bed. Went to bed, bed. And then four o'clock, brother came and knocked the door. Only about three hours, I slept. I have been traveling for twenty-one hours. And I opened the door. Then he said, brother, come for family prayer. Then after that, I was wondering, what is this? I went there. And then they started with worship. Only four, four hours ago, they worshipped. Four hours ago, only they worshipped in the night. Again, they are saying worship. And one by one, they worship. Then they sang three songs. And then we had family prayer. Then after that. All of them prayed also. All eight of us, we prayed. And by the time we finished the morning family prayer, it was six thirty. How many hours? Two and a half hours. What a wonderful thing it is. I was not grumbling, but I was rejoicing. I felt so uplifted, so fresh, staying in that house for about four days. Why I am sharing all these things with you? Let us learn these important spiritual things. Only then we can become the habitation of God. Now we come to the four very important pillars. Read that in verse forty-two. Acts chapter two and verse forty-two. Shall we read this verse altogether? Acts two and verse forty-two. We are. How does it read? Who are these we are? We read about them in the previous verses. We see in verse thirty-seven. They were pricked in their hearts. And then when we come to verse forty-one. They received the word of God. That means they accept the Lord as their savior. And then we read that they were baptized. And then in verse forty-one, we read. They were added. They were added to the body of Christ. That's what we saw yesterday and today. So such people, they are contributing in these four important things. Do you know what they are? First of all. Apostles' doctrine. Secondly, fellowship. Thirdly, breaking of bread. And fourthly, prayer. These are the four corner pillars. If you remove any one of them. The habitation of God will collapse. See, the corner pillars are very important. Now, this pillar we can take and put it again. We remove two pillars in the middle. There are four corner pillars. If you meddle with them. Meddle, meddle with them. What will happen? This whole hall may collapse also. Many years ago. The place where I was working, it is the palace of Nizam's son in Hyderabad. It is not palace, it was, it was a palace in the past. It was been given by the government to us, which is an institution in Hyderabad. So I was working there. But one day. There was a big noise. As if there was a bombshell. And as we looked where, from, from where this noise was, voice was coming. We saw in one part of building, the entire building collapsed. And we were wondering, what happened? At that time. They were trying to repair one pillar. Now, this building is a very long building. It has been built in different sections. Every section, every section had four corner pillars. And that day. In that portion, one corner pillar was, they tried to repair and therefore it crumbled. But we did not know that. And therefore, some experts were called. Highly qualified engineers came. Young people are strong. And after carefully examining the whole building. They said. This building has been built in different sections. And in this particular section, that pillar is the corner pillar. Because you touched it, this whole part collapsed. That is the meaning of corner pillar. If any one of these pillars is neglected in our spiritual life, in the habitation of God, our spiritual life, the habitation itself may collapse. Oh, there's a great danger. That's why the Holy Spirit of God has joined all these four things together. The word, Mariu, Mariu. In English, it says, and they continued steadfastly in the apostles' doctrine and fellowship and in breaking of bread and in prayer. Some other words. No, no, brother. That is a linking point. What is the meaning of that? You cannot remove any one of them. Our sisters, they wear the chains. They are all linked, linked with one another. If you want to steal a chain. If you are a clever thief. You won't pull the chain. You know what you will do? Many years ago in Hyderabad. There was a news that women were losing their chain. They are not plucking those chains from them. Somewhere, they were falling down. And this was happening regularly in the buses. They sent women spies into the ladies' section. And they caught the thieves. See, these people are all Muslims. They will wear their burka. They will get into the bus. After the bus gets fully crowded. They will come very near. And they have sharp, long scissors with them. What they will do?